We have a lot to go over, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. As you know, your final exam is coming up. So basically, I'm just gonna review all of Section 4 and Section 5, which will be on your final exam, which is all of the carbono compound things. So, there's a lot to go over, so I'm gonna go kind of fast through this, but I have some examples at the end that we'll go through that'll be somewhat similar to what you would maybe see on your test. So, the first reaction we learn with carbono compounds is hydration of outahides and ketones. You know, hydration means addition of water. Okay, so your product in these reactions is a hydrate. Okay, so you end up with two OH groups. Okay? So this can either be catalyzed by an acid or a base, which this kind of sets this apart than any other reaction. So, here's the mechanism for the acid-catalyzed hydration. So here we have either an outohide or a ketone. And when you're trying to add water, okay, water is a weak nucleophile. We know that. Carbono compounds are weak electrophiles. And they're weak electrophiles because you have this carbon-oxygen double bond. Oxygen is more electronegative, so it pulls electron density towards itself, which makes this carbon partially positively charged, and that oxygen is partially negatively charged. So this is a weak electrophile. So a weak electron and a weak nucleophile will not mix. We need some kind of catalyst or some, or something to make one of them strong. So, we use acid to protonate this carbono oxygen up here. And this is hydroxylum, H3O+, which we get from dissolving a strong acid and water. So a lone pair of electrons from oxygen will take a hydrogen from hydroxylum. Okay, so we'll add a hydrogen to that oxygen up there, which will then carry a positive charge because there's one too many bonds. So this positive charge on this oxygen up here will actually increase the partial positive charge on the carbon here because it will pull electron density, pull more electron density towards itself because it has that full positive charge, which increases the partial positive charge here. So now this is a strong electrophile. So a strong electrophile and a weak nucleophile, they can mix and they can react. So now we can add our water. So oxygen has two lone pairs of electrons. It'll attack the carbono carbon, which will break this double bond to keep that carbon tetrivalent. Okay, and those p electrons will go to neutralize the positive charge on oxygen. So we end up with this, and we add that entire water molecule to the carbon. So now that oxygen has a positive charge because it has one too many bonds, but this oxy-, or this hydrogen here can come off, no problem. We don't have to do anything to it. And then we end up with our product, which is a hydrate. So, you can also catalyze with a base instead of acid. And this one, this mechanism is a bit easier, in my opinion. So, hydroxide is already a strong nucleophile, so we don't have to do anything to make this reaction occur because a weak electron and a strong nucleophile can react. So the hydroxide will go ahead and attack the carbono carbon, break this double bond. Okay, that forms an oxygen anion here, and we added an OH group here. So, this oxygen has not enough bonds, so it'll take a hydrogen from water, which will give us back OH as a catalyst, and then give us our product, also a hydrate. Okay, so far? Okay. So, this mechanism is pretty similar. We can also add alcohols to outahides and ketones. So this must be catalyzed by acid. First step is still the same here. An alcohol is a weak nucleophile. A carbono compound is a weak electrophile. So, we're gonna protonate that carbono oxygen again to make a strong electrophile, so it can react with the alcohol. So again, we do that by protonating with a strong acid. This is hydroxylum, which is a strong acid and water. Lone pair of electrons will take the hydrogen. There should be an error here, breaking that bond, and then you'll get water off here. So then we end up with the same strong electrophile here. So now that we have a strong electrophile, we can add our alcohol. This oxygen has two lone pairs of electrons. It'll attack the carbon here, break the double bond, and that will neutralize the positive charge on oxygen here. So, and this is the mechanism where you have the hemi-aceto, hemi-ketone, and then you end up with the keto and aceto. So here, this turn into a single bond here. We have an OH group here, and then we added that whole alcohol molecule down here. So, this is a step where if this hydrogen just came off, we would end up with our hemi-aceto or hemi-ketone, depending on what that group is. Okay? But if you remember, that step is very reactant favored for most outahides and ketones. They do not have a isolable, stable hemi-aceto, hemi-ketone. So, to a very small extent, that hydrogen will come off and it'll form the hemi-aceto, hemi-ketone intermediate. But, when it gets formed, it goes straight back to this. Okay, because this OH group gets protonated so easily, it's too reactive for that to be stable, for most outahides and ketones. Okay? So instead, what's happened when we get back to this is this hydrogen will move from this oxygen up to this one up here. Okay, so that's called an intermolecular proton transfer. Okay, because we're taking a hydrogen from one part of the molecule and putting it on another part of the molecule. So, we end up with this here. Okay? And you should recognize this is a good leaving group, so we know this water is a very good leaving group. So water will leave. Okay, and to keep this carbon tetrivalent, these lone pair of electrons from the OR group that was here will come down to form a double bond and push off that water. Okay? So then we end up with this. Everyone following me so far? Okay. So, this is analogous to this. Okay? Do we see that? Because we have the carbono carbon here. We have a double bond to an oxygen. This one has hydrogen here, this one has an OR group here. But they both have that positive charge of that oxygen. So this is a strong electron. So it'll react with another molecule of alcohol just the same way. So lone pair of electrons from the alcohol will attack the carbon, break the double bond. And then we end up with this here, which is analogous to this, except now, this hydrogen can come off, and it'll actually stay off and give us a stable product because up here, we have an OH group here that's very reactive and wants to get protonated very easily, which is keeping that hemi-aceto, hemi-ketone from being stable. But here, we don't have an OH, we don't have an OH group anymore. So this can actually be stable and isolable, and that hydrogen will stay off. Okay? So now we have organic reduction. So organic production is, you're either removing hydrogen or you're removing oxygen or adding hydrogen. And one of the ways we do that is with hydride donors. And hydride is a hydrogen with an electron pair, so it's negatively charged. But hydride by itself is too reactive to control, so we use hydride donors to control the reaction. And the one you'll see most often is this lithium-aluminum hydride, which you see here. We had, we talked about the other one, sodium-borohydride, but lithium-aluminum hydride is the stronger hydride donor, and sodium-borohydride doesn't react with any of the acyl derivatives. So, just for quickness sake, I just put the lithium-aluminum hydride, but just remember sodium-borohydride as well. So, when you react aluminum hydride with outohide or ketone, okay, this hydrogen is nucleophilic, so air will come from this bond because this hydrogen is taking those electrons with it. Okay, so it'll go from the bond to the electrophilic carbon here, which will break this double bond. Okay, so we'll add a hydrogen to this carbon here. We broke the oxygen double bond there. And then this whole group adds that oxygen up there. And remember, that does not happen with sodium-borohydride because oxygen and boron do not bond together, but oxygen and aluminum do. So, that attaches up there. And then to get rid of this, if you remember, pretty much anytime you use metals in organic chemistry, you'll have to work up, which means just wash or rinse in a dilute acid. Okay, and that will get rid of these metals, and that'll also protonate that oxygen here. So you'll end up with an alcohol. Okay? So, and these are your reactions of aluminum hydride with acyl derivatives. And remember, sodium-borohydride does not react with acyl derivatives because it's just not strong enough. But, the mechanism's similar. So here, the air will come from the aluminum hydride bond to the electrophilic carbon, which will break that bond. Okay? And we end up with this, where we added a hydrogen to that carbon here, and then that whole group added to that oxygen up here. So, here's the different part where OR group is typically a good leaving group, whatever it is. So, these bonding electrons from the oxygen-aluminum bond will come down to form a double bond here, which pushes off that OR group. Okay? And then we end up with an outohide. So the outohide will react with another molecule of lithium-aluminum hydride, based on this mechanism, again. So, we can also reduce carboxylic acids, and this one is a little bit different. So this hydrogen here is a hydride, right? Because we have an electron pair with it. This hydrogen here is just a proton. So what will happen is, this hydride will combine with this proton to form H2. So the air goes from that aluminum hydride bond because this hydrogen is taking those electrons with it, and it's taking this hydrogen, which that hydrogen does not have any electrons because these bonding electrons will stay on the oxygen. Okay? We see how this is H minus, H plus, so they form together to form H2. So, and when we do that, this whole group attaches to that oxygen here. Okay? So now, it'll react with another molecule of aluminum hydride. And this is similar to the esters and the outahides, ketones. So the air will come from the bond to the carbono carbon, break the double bond, and then this whole thing will attach up there again. And then we add a hydride down here. So this whole thing here is a good leaving group. So these bonding electrons from the oxygen-aluminum bond will come down to form a double bond, just like in this step, and then push off this whole group. And then we end up back in an outohide again. And then the outohide can again follow this mechanism to an alcohol. So your goal with acyl derivatives is to reduce it to an outohide, and then the outohide will follow that same mechanism.
Many ways to form an alcohol, right? You can remember that?
Yes. There are a lot of ways to form an alcohol.
That's telling me off.
Okay, so, esterification. This is an example of interconversion, where you're going from one acyl derivative to another acyl derivative. So here, we're going from a carboxylic acid to an ester. Okay? So, and we do that by reacting a carboxylic acid with an alcohol. And remember, an alcohol, it's a weak nucleophile. Carbono compounds are weak electrophiles. So, this has to be acid-catalyzed. We have to protonate that carbono oxygen again to make a strong electrophile. So that's the step. Remember, we have that full positive charge, so that'll pull these electrons towards that oxygen, which will increase partial positive charge on this carbon. So we have a strong electrophile, and we have a weak nucleophile. So these lone pair of electrons from oxygen will attack that electrophilic carbon, break this double bond. And then we'll end up with this here, where we add this whole molecule to this carbon here. Broke that double bond, now we have a single bond here. This is similar to in the addition of alcohols, when we have the hemi-aceto or hemi-ketone. So, and it'll react similarly. So we'll have the intermolecular proton transfer. From this oxygen, where we have one too many bonds, we'll move this hydrogen to one of these OH groups. Okay? So that will form this. We got rid of that hydrogen there and put it here. So then we got a good leaving group. So, this'll leave, but to keep carbon tetrivalent, these lone pair of electrons from oxygen will come down to reform a double bond. Okay? So, we end up with this here, where we lost water. Still bonded to R and OR, and we have a double bond here. Now this oxygen has one too many bonds, unstable, but this hydrogen will come off, no problem. And we end up with an ester.
Which we can go through and make an alcohol.
Yes. So, I would, my tips for studying for this would just be to actually make sure that you're understanding the steps of mechanisms. I've been saying this, but it really does help you out on a test to just not memorize all of your mechanisms and memorize all your steps, but to actually understand the process and understand why you're doing this, and how many bonds does oxygen need? How many bonds does carbon need? What is electrophilic, what is nucleophilic? Because that's really the basis of all of these mechanisms. There's not like, an infinite amount of steps you can do because a lot of these are similar steps. A lot of them are the same, where we protonate to get a strong electrophile to react with a weak nucleophile. So, I would just encourage you to try to actually understand the steps of the mechanism rather than just practicing it until you memorize it. Because that really will help you on the test if you're stuck and you don't remember what to do. But if you actually know the foundations of the mechanisms, then that'll help you out. Okay, so, this is another interconversion reaction, where we're going from an ester to a carboxylate. Okay, and this is saponification reaction, where we react an ester with strong base. And this is how they make soap. So the mechanism for this, we have a strong nucleophile here, so we don't have to do anything to this. It'll attack the electrophilic carbon, break the double bond here. So that'll give us an oxygen anion. Okay? OR is a good leaving group, so these electrons will come down to keep that carbon tetrivalent and push off that OR group. Okay? Then we end up with a carboxylic acid and an alkoxide. Okay, so then we're gonna have an acid-base reaction because this is a base, and this hydrogen is acidic. Okay? So that OR group will take this hydrogen to form an alcohol. And then those bonding electrons will stay on that oxygen to produce your carboxylates. And again, this is how they make soap because this R group would be a big, long, giant carbon chain, okay, which is hydrophobic. And then you would have this part, which is hydrophilic. So you have part that's attracted to water and part that's attracted to grease and oil. Okay? So, addition of amines to outahides and ketones. So amines are derivatives of ammonia, which is NH3. So you replace a hydrogen with whatever R group, and that gives you an amine. So amines are nucleophiles. Nitrogen has a lone pair of electrons. So, the lone pair of electrons will attack carbon, and this is a strong enough nucleophile. We don't have to do anything to this carbono compound. So it'll attack the carbon, break the double bond. Okay, so that adds this whole thing to the carbon here. And nitrogen is stable with three bonds. Okay? Here, it has four. Okay, so it has a positive charge because it's one too many bonds. And then this oxygen up here is negative. It doesn't have enough bonds. So, if this one has too many bonds, this one has not enough. Logically, it would make sense that a hydrogen would transfer from here up to here. So that's what happens. We have the intermolecular proton transfer again. And we end up with this. Okay, and this, these reactions need to be acid-catalyzed, okay? To get past this step. So then, we protonate that oxygen up here to make a good leaving group with an acid. Okay, which forms water. So that'll come off, and nitrogen, that lone pair of electrons will come down to form a double bond to push that off and keep, keep carbon tetrivalent. So you end up with this here. Again, nitrogen is stable with three bonds. It has four here, so it has positive charge. So this hydrogen will come off, and then we'll get back our catalyst here. So then we form an amine, IMIINE. And the one thing you have to remember about this is this R group, whatever this is, can either be on this side or this side, and that will depend on the size of these groups here. So, if this group over here is bigger, then this R group will swing to this side to avoid Serikandran's and vice versa. So just try to remember that. Okay? So, because carbono compounds are electrophilic, they can react with all kinds of nucleophiles. And, one of those nucleophiles are Grignard reagents, which are carbon nucleophiles, if you remember that. And this forms an alcohol. So, if you remember, you make a Grignard reagent by reacting a haloalkane with magnesium, which will push that magnesium in between carbon-bromine bond. Okay? And this magnesium will be positively charged, which makes this carbon negatively charged, which makes us the carbon nucleophile. So, the electrons will come from the magnesium-carbon bond here to the electrophilic carbon, which breaks that bond. Okay? And similarly to the aluminum hydride, this whole thing will attach that oxygen up here. Okay? And then we add that R group here. And then again, similarly to the aluminum hydride, you'll have to work up because you're working with metals. Okay? So when you work up, you'll wash off these ions, and then you'll also protonate this oxygen here to give you an alcohol. Okay, so that's outahides and ketones. We can also react with esters. And we do that, first step is the same. Air goes from the bond to the electrophilic carbon, break the double bond. That whole thing connects to the oxygen up here. And then these reactions are very similar to the reduction reactions. So, electrons from this oxygen-magnesium bond will come down to form a double bond here, which pushes off the OR group, which is a good leaving group. And then I end up with an ester or a ketone, which can react with another molecule of the Grignard reagent, which will follow this mechanism again. So, this one's a little bit different, but this is a reaction of carbon dioxide with a Grignard reagent, which eventually gives a carboxylic acid. So this carbon is electrophilic because it's connected to two electronegative oxygens. So that bond will attack the carbon, which breaks one of these carbon-oxygen double bonds. Okay, and that whole thing connects to the oxygen here. Okay? And then we work up again to wash off these ions and protonate this oxygen, which gives this, which is just a carboxylic acid. So yeah, like I said, a lot of these steps are the same. So, keep that in mind as you're practicing. So this is when we start getting into enolates. This is Section 5. So, out-all reactions. It's a reaction of two outahides or ketone molecules via an enolate. And we make an enolate by reacting a outohide or ketone with hydroxide base or another strong base. So, hydroxide will take a hydrogen from the alpha-carbon or an alpha-hydrogen. Okay? And remember, this is your alpha-carbon because it's connected to the functional group. Okay? So when we take this hydrogen, these bonding electrons go between the carbons to form a double bond, which breaks this carbon-oxygen double bond. And we end up with this, which is our enolate. And remember, in enolates, your alpha-carbon is your reactive center. Okay? So even though in this resonant structure, oxygen has a negative charge, just remember that your alpha-carbon is actually the reactive center. Your alpha-carbon is actually what's connecting. So, now that we have an enolate, which is a nucleophile, we can react with another molecule of that same outohide, which is electrophilic. Okay? So, lone pair of electrons from oxygen will come down, which will break this double bond here, attached to the carbono carbon here, which is electrophilic, and that breaks this double bond here. So, in my opinion, the hardest part about these reactions is after this step, just trying to figure out where everything is connected. So, this carbon is this one here. Okay, it's connected to a methyl group here. This hydrogen shifted down here, and then we broke this double bond here. This is the alpha-carbon, which is what connects. That's the reactive center. That's what connects to the carbono carbon. Okay, that's here. This carbon is this one here, which is double bonded to oxygen because these electrons came down, and then this hydrogen is here. So, that is, in my opinion, the hardest part, is just trying to figure out, especially when you have bigger molecules or like rings. It gets hard to try to figure out what everything is connected to. So, when you get to here, you have an oxygen anion up here, has not enough bonds, so it'll just get protonated from water and give back hydroxide is actually a catalyst. So this is an out-all here, where you have a carbono group and then an OH group. So, when you get to an alcohol, you can stop here, or if you heat up past this point, you'll have an E1-CB reaction. Okay, where you'll eliminate this hydrogen from the alpha-carbon and the OH group and form a double bond. And that only happens when you heat. Okay? So remember that. So this hydroxyl group or the OH group will attack alpha-hydrogen again, which breaks the CH bond. And these bonding electrons will stay on this carbon here. Okay, and that forms a carb anion. Okay, where this carbon is holding a negative charge. So these electrons here will then go to reform a double bond here, which pushes off this OH. So the hydroxide again is acting as a catalyst. So then, I was running out of space here. But then, after we do the E1-CB reaction, we end up with an alpha-beta unsaturated outohide. Okay? But if you don't heat, you would stop here. Okay? So, this is Clisng condensation, which is similar to an out-all reaction, but we can't call it that because we don't actually end up with an out-all. But it's very similar. Again, we have an enolate. And this is a reaction between two esters instead of two outahides or ketones. So here, we have to use an alkoxide rather than hydroxide because we don't want a saponification reaction happening. So, we'll use an alkoxide that matches this OR group here. And then we'll do it in an alcohol solvent that also matches this group. So, but this is still a strong base. So it'll take an alpha-hydrogen. Okay, this is alpha-carbon here. Take this hydrogen, these bonding electrons, form a double bond here to break the double bond there. Okay, and then we end up with an enolate here. So this is nucleophilic with the reactive center on alpha-carbon, so it can react with another molecule of ester, which is electrophilic. So lone pair of electrons from oxygen will come down to reform a double bond here, break this double bond here, which will attack the carbon, and then break this double bond here. So, we have this carbon here, which is this one, connected to a methyl group here. This OR group shifted down here. Okay, then connected to the alpha-carbon here. This carbon is here, which is also connected to an OR group, and then double bonded to an oxygen. So, from here, OR is a good leaving group. So, these bonding electrons from oxygen will come down to push off that OR group, which will give us a beta-ketone ester. So, lots of things we can do with that. So we can have hydrolysis and decarboxylation, which is important to make ketones, which will do- which we'll do an example of that in a minute. So. When you end up with your beta keto ester, if we react with hydroxide, okay, we'll form a carboxylate, okay, similar to a saponification reaction, okay? So from here to here, this is the hydrolysis step, okay? Then decarboxylation is removal of CO2, okay, which actually gives you your ketone. So this carboxylate oxygen here is three lone pairs electrons. One will go to form a double bond here, which will break this CC bond here. These bonding electrons will go to form a double bond between these two carbons here, which break this double bond here. A lot of breaking and forming the bonds. So. End up with this, okay, because we broke this double bond here and formed another one here, okay? And then we have CO2. Okay, so this should look familiar, this is an enolate. So this will attack water, just to take a hydrogen from water, which will add to that alpha carbon, okay? These lone pair of electrons will come down and this double bond will break. And then we'll end up with a ketone and carbon dioxide. So those are important steps when you want to make specialty ketones. Okay, last thing before examples is alkylation. So again, this is important when you want to make specialty ketones. So. After you make your beta keto ester, if you don't work up to neutralize your alkoxide base, it'll keep reacting, okay? So. Because this is still in the system, right? Because when this comes off, it doesn't go away, it's still there. So if we don't neutralize this, it'll further react. So if we don't do that, lone pair of electrons from the alkoxide will take another hydrogen from the alpha carbon. Okay, so this is alpha carbon, it's between the two carbon-oxygen double bonds, okay? Which will break the CH bond, and these bonding electrons will stay on that carbon, okay, and form a carb anion here, where this carbon is holding a negative charge, okay? So now, if we want to add an alkyl group to this beta keto ester to make a specialty ketone, we do that by adding a primary alkohalide, okay? So that's what this is, and then you'll have an S and two reaction, okay? Where your nucleophile will attack carbon here, break this bond, and the leaving group comes off. We remember that S and two means nucleophile attacks, leaving group comes off, all in the same step. So that's what's happening here. And then we'll add that R group to this alpha carbon, and then bromine anion will just come off, okay? So and then from here, we can do hydrolysis and decarboxylation to take this whole group off and then end up with just this ketone. Okay, so. The samples I have here. So I have two ketone molecules and a base with heat. What's that reaction going to be? I don't want everyone talking once. It's going to be an out all reaction, right? Okay. My out all reaction will start by making an enolate, okay? So it's going to take a hydrogen from alpha carbon. Okay, and that breaks the CH bond from a double bond between the two carbons here, which breaks this carbon-oxygen double bond. And that gives me my enolate there, and I lost water. Okay, so it's a nucleophile, so I can react with my other molecule of ketone. Okay, so a lot of electrons from the oxygen will come down. Reactive center is your alpha carbon here, so that double bond will attack the electrified carbon here and break this double bond, okay? So. I normally push this group down when I'm doing these reactions and then add the alpha carbon there, okay? So there's my bond to the alpha carbon, which is here, okay? Which that alpha carbon has a methyl group on it, okay? And that methyl group doesn't attack or doesn't attach to the carbono-carbon because it's not the alpha carbon. And the reactive center is on the alpha carbon, the alpha carbon is what connects, okay? So that methyl group is on the alpha carbon, but it's not connected to the carbono-carbon. So be careful there. Okay, so my alpha carbon is connected to this carbon here, has double bond, and then I have those two carbons there, okay? Follow me? Okay. So. Now that. That oxygen anion will just get protonated from water to form an out all. Okay, and remember I said heat up here, okay? So heat tells you that it's going to go past this, you're going to have an E1CB reaction, okay? So hydroxide will come in and take this hydrogen here. Okay, and those bonding electrons from carbon-hydrogen bond will stay on that carbon there to form a carb anion.
And it takes that particular hydrogen because it is considered an alpha hydrogen?
Hmm, yes, because this is your functional group, that's the alpha hydrogen. And it's also next to the OH group, so you have to take the hydrogen that's next to the OH group, okay? And we have a lone pair of electrons there. Okay, and those lone pair of electrons will go to form a CC double bond there, which will push off that OH group here. Okay, which gives you back hydroxide as a catalyst. And that is your profit, okay?
Were you trying to draw hard?
No, sure. Okay, following that one? Okay, just remember, if it says heat, you'll do the E1CB reaction. If you do not heat, you'll stop at an out all. And I think it'll tell you if you're going to have an out all reaction or an out all and E1CB. Okay, so this one is a reduction, and I have an ester here. Okay. So this aluminum hydride bond, nucleophilic, will attack carbon here, break this double bond. And remember, this whole group will attach to that oxygen up there. And we'll add a hydrogen there, okay? So now that oxygen aluminum bonding electrons will come down to form a double bond, which will push off this whole group. This is an O R group, O R groups are good leaving groups generally. So. Okay, so that pushed off this whole group and gave us an out of hide. Okay, so remember I said lithium aluminum hydride is in excess, so you can use however much you want. So I'm going to react with another molecule of lithium aluminum hydride, okay? And that's going to react just like an out of hide, because it's an out of hide. So the bond will attack carbon here, break the double bond. Hmm, yeah, that whole group attaches to the oxygen there. Hmm. Yeah, so another hydrogen adds to that carbon there. And then you end up with this, and then from here, we just have to work up, okay, to get rid of that aluminum and to also protonate that oxygen. And that will give us, let's see, one, two. No, I'm not, I should have just kept in. Yeah, that's not going to work, okay? So that will give you. This alcohol. Okay, because we added two hydrogens to this carbon here, that was the carbono-carbon, and then we have that OH group, okay? So. We have a ketone here, and we have two molecules of alcohol, and it's in acid. So. This is a hemiketol, ketol reaction. Where we're adding alcohols to a ketone. Okay, so alcohols are weak nucleophiles, so I need to protonate, which is why it's in acid. Okay, lone pairs electrons will take hydrogen there, break that bond. It was a positive charge on oxygen there. Which makes us a strong electrophile. So now I can add an alcohol. Okay, so that oxygen has two lone pairs electrons, it'll attack carbono-carbon, break the double bond. It adds that whole alcohol molecule to the carbono-carbon. And that oxygen has positive charge, has one too many bonds. Okay, and this is where if that hydrogen came off, I would form a hemiketol. So that's not stable because of the reactivity of that OH group. So I'm going to have an intermolecular proton transfer, where I'm going to move this hydrogen up there to that oxygen. Okay. So we have water up here, it's a good leaving group. That water will come off, and to keep that carbon tetravalent, these lone pair of electrons from oxygen here will come down to form a double bond. So that oxygen has the positive charge again, so there's one too many bonds. Okay, so now we're back to this case where we have a strong electrophile, and I have two molecules of the alcohol that'll react with another molecule of that just the same way as the other electrophile. So lone pairs electrons will attack the carbon there, break this double bond to neutralize that positive charge. Okay. So now, this is analogous to the hemiketol. But now I can take off that hydrogen and it'll stay off this time because I don't have, I don't have an OH group that's reactive and that will want to be protonated. So I don't have room to write this, but that hydrogen comes off. And then you form a ketol, okay? Where you just have two O R groups connected to that carbon. Okay, so he'll definitely give you some of these where he'll give you a ketone and ask you how to make it. So. Remember, you make ketones or specialty ketones from Clisine condensation and Alkylation, hydrolysis and decarboxylation of esters. So I know I'm not going to have room to write all this, but we'll try. So to start these problems, you need to pick your starting esters, and you pick whichever side is simpler, so I'm going to pick this one. So start with this half, okay, because I need that half. And then here I can just use the simplest ester, which would have a methyl group there, okay? So. I'm going to form an enolate. And remember, I can't use hydroxide, so I need to use an alkoxide that matches that ester group there. Okay, so that will take an alpha hydrogen from this alpha carbon here, break this CH bond here, form a double bond, and then break this double bond. And that gives me my enolate there. So now I have a nucleophile, now I can react with another molecule of that ester. Okay, because that carbon is electrophilic. So these lone pairs will come down, this double bond will break and attack that carbono-carbon there, which breaks this double bond here, okay? Okay, so I'm shifting this ester group down, that carbon-oxygen double bond broke, okay? So now I'm adding the alpha carbon just here to that carbon. Okay, so alpha carbon is connected to a methyl group there, okay? And then also connected to this carbon, which is double bonded to that oxygen and then ester group. So if you get confused here, you can check to make sure you have all your carbons. So we have one, two, three, four, or one, two, three, just kidding. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, okay? So we have three carbons on each ester, we should end up with six carbons. So do that to double check yourself once you get to this step, to make sure everything is connected and you didn't leave out any carbons. So. From here, in Clisine condensation, those lone pair of electrons come down and push off that O R group. Okay, so. From here, if I just did hydrolysis and decarboxylation, that would take off this whole group, okay? And then I'd end up with this ketone without this methyl group, okay? But I need to add that methyl group, so. What I'm going to do is I'm going to let that alkoxide, okay, that I just took off there, react further here, okay? That will take this hydrogen. Okay, and those bonding electrons will stay on that carbon to form a carb anion. Okay, and those bond electrons will stay on that carbon to form a carbanion. Okay, so now I have a nucleophile there. Okay, and if I want to add a methyl group, then the source of my methyl group, I need a primary alcohol halide, so I'm just going to use methyl bromide. Okay. And because bromide is electronegative, this carbon is electrophilic. So those lone pair electrons will attack that carbon there, which will break that carbon bromide bond. Okay, so now if I take off that group, then I'll end up with the ketone I want. So to take off that group, I'm going to react with hydroxide. Okay, and this is my beta keto ester, right? So when I do that, I have a saponification reaction, okay, where I make a carboxylate. Okay, and then I can form my ketone from decarboxylation. For these lone pairs come here. Okay, form a double bond there, break this bond, so I take that whole group off, which form a double bond there, break that. I don't have room for that. Okay. Oh wait, that came up. Okay, so that whole group, this whole group came off, I know it's hard to see because I don't have room, but this whole group came off. These electrons went to form a double bond here, broke this double one here, then I make an N L eight, which can then take a hydrogen from solvent, so you use a product solvent like water. Okay, which will form a double bond here. These electrons will come down, okay? And that double one will break to take a hydrogen, which will stabilize that alpha carbon. And then I'll end up with that ketone. I know it's kind of messy, but did we follow that? Okay, so he'll definitely ask you questions like that. So be sure you know how to do all these steps. And you know how to make whatever ketone he asks you. So if the sides are not symmetrical, you know you have to do alkylation at some point. Okay. So here, I have an ester and hydroxide. Okay, so that's a saponification reaction, right?
You're going to make soap.
I'm going to make soap. We actually made soap last night at our ACS event. And I'm sad, when they were setting the date, I wasn't thinking about how you guys had a lap final. And I was like, dang, that would have been nice for them to come since you were learning about saponification.
So let us do a soap instead of a lap.
Mm hmm.
He was like, oh, oh, oh.
Yes, no, it does not. Okay. So we act with hydroxide. Hydroxide attacks, carbono carbon, breaks the double bond. Okay, so I add O H down there. And I broke double bond, I added with an oxygen anion. So these bond electrons will come down to push that whole ester group off. Okay, because O R is a good leaving group. Okay, so then I end up with the carboxylate acid there. And then an alkoxide. Okay, so this is a base that hydrogen is acidic. So I have an acid base reaction where that base will take this hydrogen and those bond electrons will stay on that oxygen. And then I have a carboxylate. Okay, last one. So this is an ester with a grignard reagent. So his carbon is nucleophilic. The electrons come from the carbon magnesium bond. That will attack the carbono carbon, break the double bond. And don't forget your charges when you get to this step. So this bromine has a negative one charge. Magnesium has a positive two charge. Oxygen has a negative charge. So I don't, I don't think he would take points off for that, but just remember it. Okay, and then I added an ethyl group down here. Okay, so now these bond electrons from the oxygen magnesium bond will come down from a double bond and push off that O R group. Okay, which gives me a ketone. Okay, so I react with two molecules of that. So can react with another molecule of the grignard reagent in the same way. Okay, arrow comes from the carbon magnesium bond to the electrolyte carbon, breaks the double bond. And that magnesium bromide connects to the oxygen up there. Okay, and then I added another ethyl group there. So from here, then I work up to remove the ions and then also protonate that oxygen, which will give me this alcohol. Okay. Any questions? Well, that is all I have.